Good evening. We have a packed house tonight. I officially opened and called to order the November meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission, and we always like participation. And you know, some nights we have a crowd, and some nights we don't. But we appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the invocation. I'll ask Mr. Moses if he would give that to us.
Always remember that's very grateful for nothing, because we don't know how fast. Your love even a thank you gathered today for citizens. Thank you things you do, the help was great much better. So did all even a bless everyone here, uh, to hear my voice out. Know that we all looking out for one another, grateful. Always hope it has meaningful and gathered by whoever. Bless that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. The commissioners have received their packet. They've had a chance to review the minutes. If there are no changes, corrections are. Thank you, Mr. Moses. He's always quick to pull the trigger. I got a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All as a favor, say aye. Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. All right, the first item on the agenda is PC 2023-32. This is a request to rezone 110 Oakland Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, yes, members of the commission, please bear with me as I dust off things a little bit. Ms. Zlatnicki is out sick, so I have stepped in in for her, and will be handling the two cases tonight.
I'm sure we're in good hands.
Well, thank you. Before you, for first public hearing and matter in position is the request rezone 1,011 10 Oakland Avenue from NC 6.1 to NC 6.3. This is designated as Florence County Tax Back Number 90114-08-004. This property again is located along the Oakland Avenue corridor. It is adjacent to the Habitat Florence Housing Authority properties, the multifamily properties off of, I believe it's Rose Avenue is the main entrance, backs up to that, but it does front on Oakland Avenue. The adjacent properties are zoned NC 6.1. The property to the rear is NC 6.3, so this is similar to a lot of properties along main corridors where there are transitions occurring in between the densities of the development and zoning designation. So in this corridor, you'll see various zoning designations from commercial reuse to campus activity center, NC 6.3, and commercial generals. Again, this is a very mixed use area as far as the development goes. This is a photo of the existing property. The applicant Gina Tanner, they are again requesting the zoning designation of NC 6.3. This is, this would allow an increase in the opportunity for density, new housing. They're, they're looking to demo the property and redevelop it. And we do have a proposed site plan showing the redevelopment. This is, this is the proposed site plan. Again, this, this is a little bit higher density of a proposed development. Would be considered a townhouse style development if, as being permitted by the building department. And the, we have a few inspiration photos provided by the applicant on kind of the idea behind what it is they are looking to redevelop the property as.
Did you go back to that, that west?
Yeah. Yes.
Is Oakland Avenue the straight road in the front?
Oakland Avenue is located along this corridor here, so you can't really see the, this would be an internal driveway to the property.
I got you. Thank you. That was confusing.
And this is a 3D image of the proposed project. Again, this will have the various, the various buffer yard requirements between the use and the adjacent properties, along with the parking requirements and everything that would be required with the site development within our Unified Development Code. This is another view of the property.
And all this on a 50-foot wide?
50-foot wide.
Wow, that's amazing. I'm impressed. Y'all did, y'all did good.
And this is something that I believe that we will be seeing happening more and more as developments are becoming more and more dense. Construction costs, everything is gearing us towards more dense development. And as, as within the comprehensive plan, we are looking for infill redevelopment. Basic townhouse standards, the minimum lot size for infill development is half an acre. Townhouses are to be oriented with the primary entrance facing the street. All units must be established on single lots and arranged to ensure public access. And most, all of these items are items that we would review during the development phase. So these would be items administratively approved should the rezoning request be approved. Again, this, this will occur during engineering and everything with the applicant. And this concludes staff.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. First of all, I'd like to say the visuals helped me a lot, because I was kind of struggling seeing how you could get five units on that. But thank you for doing that and the extra expense that may have occurred. Are there any questions of staff before we go to a public hearing?
I think you just answered mine. There's five units.
Yes, five total, four total.
Oh, four, okay. Yeah, with the setbacks and all that.
Parking.
Any other questions for staff? Well, they have the option, and I would love for you to, if you, what we do, what we do next is we open what's called a public hearing portion. This is, this is when we invite the audience and the applicant, if they want to, to come forward and, you know, speak on behalf of or against. And if you have any problem there with the audience, so. So I'll open it up to, if you would like to come forward, give us your name, come to the podium, and we'll make it official as far as recording is concerned.
Good evening. I'm Gina Tanner. That's my husband, Chance Tanner.
Good evening.
We are not originally from Florence, but by way of my father, my father, grandparents, believe my great-grandparents, all born here.
Oh, wow.
I used to come here when I was a child, you know, my parents, we live in California, awesome. My parents used to throw me on a plane and ship me out here when I was little, and I would stay the summer with my grandmother, out in the country with my cousins. I used to love coming here.
Yeah.
Got my husband to come out here about seven years ago, and now he loves it. Working more than we are in California. And you know, we just, I keep telling him about what Florence used to look like, and I just, in my heart, I want it to look like that again. It's like, you know, I love real estate, but I also really care, desire to be that beautiful, quaint, homey town that I remember as a child. So that's really, I would say, the main reason why we're doing this and, you know, really fighting to get something done. Because I think, you know, with the work, it can be great town.
Well, Ms. Tanner, you're a blessing to our community, and you, sir, as well. Does any of the, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant, Ms. Tanner?
Trying to read through just quick. Houston, you build a town, those are townhouses you should do?
Yes. Uh, we're looking at two bedrooms, too bad. Yes. Yes, and for sale.
They four people being forced in?
Yes.
That's, that's.
Okay.
Four second.
Yes.
Not that it matters, but have you, did you say you have moved, you've moved to Florence?
Pretty much. We, we have a home here. We have our cars here, everything. Everybody asks, you know, they'll text or calls, like, what, where are you? Are you guys in South Carolina or California? We're here so much, so.
The taxes are a lot cheaper here, I'm at.
Yes. Pretty much everything, except for food.
Have, have, uh, community, have you talked to community, have people been about this?
I have not.
I think this came up once before, this same property.
No, I have never promised to the community or the city.
I know what some concerns before regarding, um, townhomes in some of the, in the neighborhoods. And so when it was presented, when you talk about townhomes, it was like, some townhomes, like you said, you want the communities to look better, and you want to bring that back a lot. And you were talking about the townhomes and everything, the single-family detached, looking at, looking at it. I like it, I must say, compared to others that I've seen, you know. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. I do have one question of staff, and, and Mr. and Ms. Tanner, this is something that always we have to look at, is how does a new project impact the neighbor? And we, we have a single-family home adjacent to this property, and they are probably elated that y'all are doing this. But has there been any response or call from the neighborhoods or?
We have not received any, any calls regarding the rezon.
Was there a sign placed?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You know, if there would have been calls of concern, and I don't really understand why, I think the fact that you're offering it for sale gives, as Mr. Moses was concerned about, it gives ownership. People tend to take care of their stuff, and, and ownership leads to an asset, an investment in life. And, and we want to see that community be more owners than renters.
Right.
And I think your plan covers all of that. Now, there's always a chance.
With that size, that we can make them affordable, you know, in the affordable price range. Also that, you know, we are for profit, but.
Of course.
With a nonprofit value. So, you know, that's why we were looking at those four, and with the size, that, you know, they can be affordable for young families, you know, single mother, you know, everyone deserves to have, you know, have homeownership.
Absolutely. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Tanner, very much for coming forward. I'm not going to invite anyone against, because we don't have anyone. So I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
I move we approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. A motion, a second to prove as requested. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All as a favor, say aye. Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. Congratulations. I wish you great success. All right, the next item on the agenda is PC 2023-33, and we have, give this to Mr. Moore again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a request by city staff to amend the Jeffries Creek overlay district and the floodplain development ordinances during, how, how we often discover some of these discrepancies, when, when someone is coming forward with a project and we have to review our ordinances, often we can, we can find some issues or points of clarification that need to be made. During this process, we did discover that when we originally adopted the state floodplain model, we were a little bit ahead of when the state finalized their ordinance actually. So they provided that to us early on. We moved forward with adoption, and then later, when they adopted it, it was about a year or two after we adopted the model ordinance, we have now discovered a few discrepancies in there that, that need clarification, just because if we do, as staff, conduct a little literal interpretation of this, which is what we are certainly required to do, just because of the, with floodplain, there's, there's very little room for intent. It's a very clear-cut ordinance on what can and cannot be done within that area. So we discovered a few discrepancies with the state floodplain ordinance that certainly would have added some pretty significant concerns for anyone doing any work within, within that area. So we also met with the state floodplain coordinator, as well as our FEMA representative that reviews all this and reviews our ISO rating and everything that, that we do regarding the floodplain. And they were, of course, highly recommended that we move forward with, with these changes, and that it would not impact our ISO rating, which impacts everyone's interests. So we'll move forward with, with this. So in section 4-12.5.1, which is the repair and buffer requirements, our original ordinance stated improvements or other activities that are recognized to disturb land or degrade water quality are not permitted. They recommend that we change this. It creates a lot of limitations. So, for example, we are looking to daylight our stream in the Timrod Park. We purchased the property just north of Spruce Street. We actually purchased two, two properties, and we're going to be daylighting that property, that stream that's currently within two culverts.
Please explain daylighting to me, and I'm embarrassed to ask.
Yes, yes. So the, currently, the stream, Gully Branch, in that area, is all underground until it hits Timrod Park. And so we've been able to purchase a couple of properties. We've gotten a $5.5 million grant through the State Office of Resilience to do stormwater work within this watershed, and part of that project will be removing the stream from the culverts and, and bringing it back to its original state. And so with that, the literal interpretation would not allow us to do any of those improvements. It would also not allow for individuals that have existing storage units or anything of that nature, if they need to replace it, we cannot allow them to do that. So the intent of this ordinance is to protect, allow certain activities to occur, but protect the overall health and wellness of our streams. So we added the language, we struck the or degrade water quality not permitted, and added, increased the impervious, so it would read improvements or other activities that are recognized to disturb land or increase the impervious area or degrade water quality are not permitted unless demonstrated that said impacts provide for a net reduction of impervious area, contribute to an increased improvement in water quality, preservation of the overall scenic beauty and wildlife habitat and floodplain functionality. So individuals still be able to do, do the minimal work within, within the floodplain, but they, they cannot cause any additional detriment to it. The next portion is within section 4-12.6.3, which is the flood hazard reduction. And this is getting into really the more area of concern, specifically the area where subsection 2-8.1, we are replacing the, the impact with the ore. So if anyone is doing any specific to building work, so a residential home, if they're looking to add a porch or, or expand any of that work, it is not impacting the floodway. They are permitted to do certain activities. And depending on the activity, it can require either a no-rise certificate, this is getting a little technical, but it can require a no-rise certificate by a licensed land surveyor, or you can request through FEMA to amend the federal floodplain maps that they produce every about 10 years. The way our current ordinance reads, it would require both of those, which would cause a significant issue for anyone looking to do simple work. To get a, to get a map amendment through FEMA can take very, very long. I have, to give you an example, I applied for a generator grant for our fire station back in fiscal year '22, and I just heard that they finished the review and that they're all beginning back to be very soon. So as you can imagine, anyone, any of our residents that are looking to, to do any improvements to the property, that could, that could have a significant time impact and cause some major issues. So many of the other thing, other items were, was language that was either amended or left off from our original model ordinance that we have added to or struck from, from the existing ones. And with that, I will, that concludes staff.
Very good work. It amazes me, the, the detail and the layers that you have to go through. I mean, I don't have the makeup to be able to sit there and read the whole thing.
And the floodplain ordinance is, is one that's very strict, very, very much like our ISO rating with fire. You know, we, through the fire department, we have an ISO rating of one, which gives every resident in the city a, a reduction on their insurance. It's the same with, with the floodplain. So right now, we have an ISO six, which is not the greatest, but given the number of properties that we have in the floodplain, it's, it's on par with where we should be. But what we certainly, Jerry Dudley did a tremendous amount of work years ago, bringing us from an ISO seven to an ISO six and increasing.
Lower the ISO.
Lower the ISO better. And what we do not want to do is put that in jeopardy and drop it back down. So this is all part of that, as we, as we, as we move forward and as we look at things, making improvements to the ordinance.
Thank you for what you do. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Moore?
I have, I have a couple. So you're getting a $5 million grant to open some of these Gully Branch in particular, right?
That's right.
So I used to skip rocks at Gully Branch when I was a little boy, a long time ago, okay? And we know that Gully Branch is contaminated. We know that. There's no, there's no question about that. So when we look at these things where they hook up to Jeffries Creek, which is about halfway down Irving Street, those, that development area, all that stuff on there is all wet, all right? So any impact that's done around there, I'm all about property rights. I know, y'all know that, okay? But as far as amending these or changing this, can, can we go further to protect all of Gully Branch? And even, even down that whole area in the back, I mean, if, if it's a hard rain list area, you know, there's people in listeria, and San Tito step out their backyards, they're, they're in water almost, you know? So any development in that area is gonna, it's gotta increase the contamination, the runoff, all this other stuff. So, and I, I did talk to Clint earlier today, all right? So just, don't hear me out. So this basically just gets us to where, where we're kind of out of the trap, so to speak. But I actually asked if there was a way to be more protective of that area, because it's been contaminated for a long time, and nobody's done anything about it. So I think the contamination's coming from a lot of stuff, really. That's my two cents. I just, I just, I don't know enough about hydrology to get involved with that thing, all right, much as he does. But I do think that, I have gotten a couple of calls from people over in that area about not being protective enough of that whole watershed area. So didn't, I asked him, I said, can we be more restrictive of this particular area to protect it more, you know, on what we're doing? He said, let's try to get through this first and get everything back to even par, then we'll talk about that. But I just, I just find sometimes if you kick stuff down the road, I've heard Mr. Moses say this a lot, if you kick something down the road, it just never comes back sometimes when you have an opportunity to talk about it. So I've said my piece for those people on that area that live there. So that's what I told him I'd do.
Similar to what, what's occurring now with this ordinance change, it causes us to, to look at the ordinance, right? So it shines daylight on some other things that we need to look at as well. So the original riparian buffer yards and all the requirements that are currently in place, outside of what we're, we're amending tonight, was put in place many years ago. It was put, put in place back in 2008. Obviously, we have seen a lot of development since that time. And it's only responsible, you know, this is a, this is a living, breathing document, and it's our responsibility to make the needed amendments as we continue to grow and change within our area and, and take a look at that. So that, you brought up a very good point.
Perfect example, I'll tell you. In, in the beach area, when you look at Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle Beach, and Cherry Grove and that end, and, and you're wondering, gosh, what, what is all this gonna do? What's it gonna do? And then when you look at Merle's and the Paulies, you're going, why are they so protective of that? Why do they want to do that? Why do they want to do all this? Then you just have to drive up one day and look on the north end, and you're going, oh, that's, glad they're doing that down here to, to not get where we are there. So that's, that's my only thing I just wanted to bring up. I said, say my piece.
Any other questions?
No, the question, I remember when I was kind of years ago, there was a flowing well at Jeffries Creek. I never know what happened to it.
There was one in the park there, wasn't there?
It was down near Jeffries Creek, I remember.
You mean behind, behind Chuck, well, behind the old gangplank? Is that what you're talking about?
It was somewhere up in the river.
Oh, okay.
Flowing well, it ran. And I've been looking, I went back.
I'm not sure.
For your time, man.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I will open the public hearing portion of this request and invite anyone that would like to come forward and speak.
You'd like me to come forward, or do you want to hear me?
You have to come forward. And you can go to the podium. Yeah, please. And of course, we know your name. Give us your full name, please.
I'm Lyles Cooper, and I have lived in the Jeffries Creek overlay for the last 30 years in four different houses within two blocks. I don't go very far. I love the neighborhood, and I've noticed over time and throughout my careers as economic development for the county, a hotel and downtown developer, to now working in land protection, I've learned a lot about the balance. And I do very much appreciate Mr. Law Hand's comments, because that's exactly what needs to happen, is I do agree that the amendments as proposed, I have no issues with. Get them passed, move on. But I do, I would like to request a committee be brought together to look at the riparian buffer widths on some of these areas. I think it's extremely insufficient. These types of ordinances, if they're not strengthened, and they're not, the staff has not given the ability to question and stop things that they know are wrong, we're going to have overdevelopment and those waterways that are, are. that are already critically impaired are only going to get worse. Case in point, this commission passed the Indigo Towns apartment complex. I don't know how to say it any plainer. It was an absolutely horrible addition to the community. They went in and clearcut right below on a slope of 13 acres of impervious surface. They cut all the trees, putting in very high-dense apartment complexes, and it's about 10 feet from the drop-off to Gully Branch. So, all of those folks that live on Listeria and Santee, not only will their yards start flooding when a hard rain comes, probably when it sprinkles soon. Not to mention, I can't flush my toilet when the rain comes down hard. That's how bad the water pressure is in that neighborhood. And I know the city's doing, going to great lengths with plans and getting DEHEC approval for enormous amounts of funding that's going to have to go into the reconstruction of that infrastructure. And I appreciate all the work that goes into it. But until some of that's done, the staff needs the ability to be flexible to question some of these developments when common sense tells them it's wrong. So, I just ask that y'all look back at this ordinance after these amendments are approved to see if there's some ways, especially within the areas of increasing the riparian buffers in critically critical areas that are already impaired.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Mr. Moore, have y'all structured or talked about, again, we're going to get through tonight first, but maybe it's something that you and your team or association can sit down with planning and put together a committee that works in that direction.
I'd be happy to help in any way. I'm not a hydrologist. I know the basics on hydrology. It comes down from the sky and it has to go somewhere. I do know a little more than that with my current job. I am not representing, to be clear on the record, I am not representing PD Land Trust tonight. It's, this is coming from me as a citizen. I also serve on the City Resiliency Advisory Council or Committee at the moment. And these are one of the things that has been brought up as needing the most attention in some sort of resiliency plan is looking at these ordinances and seeing what ways can we improve it to at least make us pause before we overdevelop in areas that shouldn't be. You know, that one example, Indigo Towns apartment complex, within five blocks, there are seven for-sale properties, six of which wouldn't even have to be combined, that that exact complex could have gone on that is already full of impervious surfaces uphill. So, the whole idea of the infill and redevelopment, I think, is a critical area that the city needs to go into and incentivize that versus allowing development to go downslope on critical waterways.
In defense of this commission, I do have to say that we are a recommending body. And it was a very difficult night, because I think all of us, well, most of us that were here, in our heart of hearts, it hurt because we felt your pain. But the law gave that property owner the right to build it. And again, we don't change the law, we just have to follow it. Now, where your fight should have been was with city council, but I won't go there. And we don't need to bring that up.
You don't want me to comment on the regular.
But you know what?
And I wasn't complaining against, I'm just saying, if there are certain ordinances that can be improved to avoid things like that.
Yes, plan ahead.
It needs to be looked at now, because as is, y'all didn't have a leg to stand on, staff didn't have a leg to stand on to deny it, because legally, they were allowed to do it. So, if we can improve some of those things, we won't put ourselves in that situation.
And thank you, Ms. Go ahead.
Well, no, I just, I think that's a fair push. And that's why we're here. I mean, that's why we're all here, right? I mean, we're here to make our community better. And we're here to balance that tension between development and environment. And so, you know, this issue before us, I think, is pretty cut and dry. But it has shone a light, Clint, and you said that earlier. And now, Lyles has sort of spoken to it as well, that there is, it struck a bit of a nerve and something the city does need to spend some time on. And Mark, again, with his comments. So, you know, I think it's well worth the time and effort. And I don't know where that comes from, whether that really needs to come out of council or whether we play a role in that. But I, you know, I would recommend that we deal with this tonight. But then, we also sort of tag a recommendation along with it that says, "Hey, let's take this opportunity, the light was shone on it, on this issue, and let's try to deal with it."
I will tell you this, Lyles. I've already called my city council member. I said, "Look, when this came up, I started looking at it. Yes, I did vote for that legally. I don't think I had a choice because it was in the law." I started looking at some of these borders and the setbacks and all that. And I'm a developer too. I think these are severely, severely undershot. You know, I'm sure the next development I would do, I'm gonna be stung. But I agree with you.
Explain what you said, "undershot."
I just, I think it needs to.
Some of the buffers 10-foot need to be poured.
Yeah, I think the buffer should be four, five, six times what they are currently. I mean, in my opinion. Knowing about what I know about runoff, stormwater, which I know he knows a lot more, but I've been doing it for 20 years, guys, trust me. So, I had no choice to vote the law last time. But, there's always a but. I've already told him that, and when he talked about committees, I'd be more than happy to get on that committee with somebody and talk about this, because I've already talked to Brian Raddick. I said, "Look, man, you need to spearhead this." So, and he is. He is. And I think these are just, I think these borders need to be widely, I mean, they're just not, they're just almost comical when you look at some of them. Honestly, guys, they're almost comical, all right? So, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we should somehow or another put a committee together, subcommittee together with whoever. And look at this. I'm not talking about nine months, a year from now. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, you know, put a 45-day on it and come back before this thing, whatever you got to do. Brian said, whatever he's got to do to make this happen. Because this kind of stuff, you just can't sit on your hands. You sit on your hands, 10 years goes by, and the next thing you know, we're wondering why, you know, Gully Branch is still contaminated. That's my two cents. So, I can assure you that I've already called, my city council member said, "We need to, I need you to check on this too. You're elected. You got more power than I do." So, I think you need to jump into it. So, he is.
It would be staff's recommendation, similar to what we.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Airbnb ordinance is the first one that comes to mind, where Planning Commission formed a smaller committee that worked with staff to develop the needed changes to the ordinance. And so, what I would recommend that we do, which is fully within Planning Commission's right, and actually, really, a lot of what we should be doing as a commission. So, I would recommend that for staff to start conducting our research with other municipalities in North and South Carolina, possibly Georgia, to see some of their ordinances and riparian buffers and various other things that they have in place for us to start putting that together. And then, we will work with the chairman to develop a subcommittee that we can put together a final ordinance, working with some stakeholders, that Planning Commission can make a recommendation to city council for those changes.
Should we put on the agenda for next month, an update?
Yes, certainly.
And then, keep it on the agenda until we have the committee formed. There's some structure there.
That's right.
And that way, Mark, we're not going to let it slide under the table in another 10 years.
That's right.
So, we need a vote to have it on the agenda for next month?
No, we, as staff, just working with the chairman, we'll put that up.
One more quick question, Mr. Chairman. So, what happens, I know what happens in Ori County. If there's a question like this comes up, and all of a sudden, you know, tomorrow, somebody puts in a mega-development, the brakes are pumped. So, now, hold on a minute. We're going to table this for as long as it takes. Do we have this committee with the public? We look at all this. We're going to pump the brakes on these developments at just, you know, at the last hour. And they just all put them in and say, "Get it approved, get it approved." So, what's staff's position on that? Somebody could come up tomorrow, although it may be legal, and all these boards and everything, you know, are we just going ramrod them through? Are we going to pump the brakes? Really? Are we going to do good here and pump the brakes until we figure out what the best thing to do?
So, you say the county does?
The Ori County will shut you.
I'm talking about Florence County.
No, I'm just saying what happens in, I know what happens in Ori County. In Florence County, I don't know what happens. But I can envision that if someone hears us talking about changing these setbacks, all of a sudden, there's going to be 15 developments or whatever developments that'll be approved. I might not build it for three years, but they'll be approved. And then, what we've done is for naught. So, all I'm getting at is, you know, I don't have the run on his office going, "Let's get all these approved." I've seen it. I've seen it, guys. I'm telling you. I ain't admitting I've done it one time.
And we don't have the growth that Ori County does, but I do.
Well, I've done it in Florence before. You know, I was within the law, and I just had my team do it quickly. And we thought something was going to change, and we knew what the rules were then. We had everything laid out, and we went forward. So, my only question, she can't, she's there, all right? And if I was sitting in her position, I'd be asking these questions too. Are we going to just ramrod stuff through planning and everybody else if this is legal? Or are we going to pump the brakes and say, "Hey, I don't know, I don't know what the legalities are of that, Mr. Chairman"? What do we do until we figure out what the right thing to do?
Moore, will you address that?
Yes. Typically, what occurs, a city council or a county council would have to pass a pending ordinance, ordinance essentially putting a hold on that until the amendments can be made. Something of this nature, I don't know, again, when we work with developers, you know, often there's, the floodplain does not come into an issue very often. I mean, it's certainly there. But we, because of our floodplain ordinance and just the awareness that developers have gotten with everything, we highly recommend, really cause them to subdivide all of that area out of their development, so that they're not impacting floodplain in the least bid and all that's essentially removed from the equation. If we go the pending ordinance change, I think based on, based on these changes, it could be, you know, we're looking at probably between reviewing and developing an ordinance, Planning Commission making recommendation to city council, and then the needed two, assuming everything goes well, the two needed readings at city council, you're looking at a very minimum for a four-month process. And so, with these changes, I would not recommend that we do a pending ordinance. I think that, you know, often, the developers that we work with, we can discuss this with them. And if we, if we see that issue start to arise, we can certainly go to council and have them, hey, we need to, we need to get this put in place.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're sort of hopping between subtopics here. And I think we ought to deal with the issue in front of us right now, so that we don't get too far off the beaten path. But I would recommend, let's call, I'd like to call for the vote. Let's get this one off the table, because I think we all agree on the action we take. And then, we figure out the next steps with this committee and different things moving forward with council.
All right. I had to call for the vote. I'll officially close the public hearing and call for a motion.
I move we approve as city recommended.
Okay. Have a, have a motion, a second to approve as city has provided. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I said that quickly.
I said my piece.
I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye. Like signs, nay. No, I didn't hear from you.
Oh, aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so, we are in agreement that we're going to bring it up next month, an update.
We'll place it on the agenda. If there are any individuals that know Mr. Lawhong, chairman, any others that would like to be on the committee to review this, please, please let me know. You know, come and tell me.
Absolutely.
After the meeting. And we will start work on developing the changes to the ordinance.
Okay.
All right. I have a question.
I have a question. This is going back to Mr. and Mrs. Tanner.
Yes.
Just a, just a, just a comment. I know that you're proposing to do townhomes. One suggestion that I would make is to reach out to the neighborhood associations to let them know kind of what you're doing. And that way, you can get feed, feedback from the community in that area. So, just wanted to say, because it's all about, like you say, coming back and restoring. So, that's just a suggestion.
Good suggestion.
I think last month, we have, we have a new member of the commission. And I think we need to properly introduce her and have her say something if she would like.
We actually did that last month. And I asked her, and she wouldn't, she said she preferred not to.
Oh, okay. I wanted to give her the opportunity, so.
Yeah, and thank you.
We really want to.
In fact, Ms. Gregg actually brought it my attention. You've got to introduce her. And I said, "I've already talked to her." And she kept on putting the elbow in.
Well, I know who she is, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. We're blessed to have her on the commission. And I won't let your whole secret out that you told me earlier tonight. She brings a wealth of knowledge, I'll just say that. Call for motion to adjourn?
Who gave you the adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's heaven. Thank you all.